Right on the water.
Yeah.
We blow that pickle.
I didn't see my pot.
I thought you were new to it.
It's okay. It's all right. I did.
That was kind of me.
But my parents, my aunt and cousins, they never left.
But you're sort of bad thing.
My mother had nothing. You know, for here with the old pot.
Well, that's funny. No, good. Good, good, good.
The person you're trying to reach is not available. Ask the town.
Hi. Okay. All right. So I'm going to mute you if you don't mind. Oh, I don't think I need to. Just don't make noise. Don't let your dog walk or whatever.
Your phone. Her phone.
Her phone.
She motes it. If she uses it.
We mute it.
You mute it. But anyway, let me know. Somebody to let me know if you want to pick it up.
Let's go. Okay. This is the Wednesday 7:00 PM Special Services District meeting, and we will begin with roll call. I turn on here. Bye.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Commissioner Blanks.
Present.
Commissioner Kanter.
Here.
Commissioner Cortez.
Here.
Commissioner Fay.
Present.
Commissioner McGinnis.
Present.
Commissioner Pollan. Commissioner Walters.
Here.
Commissioner Winograd.
Here.
Commissioners Zedanowitsch.
Here.
Commissioner Spivak. Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Basanese. Commissioner Safian. We have a quorum, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. All right. First will be if there is a public forum, if there's any comments. I don't think there are, but. And then we will go to number three, Mr. Winograd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the minutes from April 22, 2025.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We don't have. Wake up, Ms. McGinnis. We don't have any petitions. We don't have a consent calendar, receipt of communication, so we are none new business. Adoption of scheduled meetings for 2026. Mr. Winograd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt a schedule of meetings for 2026.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Vote passes. Any nays? Any abstentions? Okay. We'll go to B. Mr. Winograd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt a resolution setting the January 20, the January 2026 meeting date for the West Hartford Special Services District General Meeting of the Members.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. We. Are there any staff reports? Mr. Ledwin? No.
No, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
No need for executive session. All right. So without objection, I make a motion to adjourn. Is there any objection? Don't need to do it that way, but that's okay. Seeing no objection, we are now adjourned. Thank you. All right. I am calling the 7:15 public hearing to order. This is to order. This is an ordinance concerning the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission. We will begin with roll call. Mr. Davidoff.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Councilor Blanks.
Present.
Mayor Kanter.
Here.
Commissioner Cortez.
Here.
Commissioner Fay.
Present.
Commissioner McGinnis.
Present.
Commissioner Pollan.
Here.
Commissioner Walters.
Here.
Commissioner Winograd.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Winograd. Commissioner Zedanowitsch.
Here.
Thank. Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. All right. We were going to begin with a presentation from the Town Manager, Mr. Ledwin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, everyone. For the record, Rick Ledwin, Town Manager, and I'm going to ask our Director of Leisure and Social Services, Helen Rubino-Turco, to join us at the podium. And Helen's going to give a brief summary of the really minor changes to the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission ordinance. And through you, Madam Mayor, I will turn things over to Ms. Rubino-Turco. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ledwin. Helen Rubino-Turco, Director of Leisure Services and Social Services. The ordinance concerning the Senior Citizen Advisory Commission was established in 1972. And over the last few years, we have been working with the the commission members about streamlining some of their language and changing their term limits. Right now, it's five years, and they want to move it to three years, which is more consistent with other boards and commissions that the town has. And they also wanted to update some of the outdated language, such as elderly or retired, and replace it with a more general term of older adults. We spent a number of months over the last, actually several of the last couple of years, talking about this. And really, the time is right. And so we feel that these changes will update the language, make it more consistent with ordinances surrounding senior citizens advisory commissions around the region and around the country to update the language and also to make the term limits more consistent. That is about the extent of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rubino-Turco. Anything further, Mr. Ledwin? No? Nothing.
That summarizes everything, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Any comments or questions? I know, Ms. Pollan, you have. This has been through your committee, so I don't know if you want to. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't really have much to add. Ms. Rubino-Turco did a good job explaining the reasoning behind it. I do think this is actually overdue. And the language of older adult is just more generally accepted in in policymaking and in the community. So I would encourage us to move forward with this. I do want to just note that we're not changing the name of the commission. And so that might be a little unusual that we're leaving the term senior citizen in the name of the commission, but not in any of the language. And I think that just has to do with our process as a town. And we would probably, I think, and I might turn to Corporation Council on this one, need to dissolve the commission and reinstitute it if we change the name.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pollan. Actually, Dallas is going to address that. Mr. Dodge.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, Councilor Pollan is right that normally it would make sense to update the name of the commission based on the changes that we're making. However, the reason we're not doing that is that there are certain federal and state grants that we're eligible for that are specific to a senior citizen commission. So we want to remain consistent with that and make sure that we don't jeopardize eligibility for any state or federal grants.
Thank you. That's helpful. Okay. Any comments or questions?
Mrs. Kanter, I also wanted to mention that we did also research how other towns have done this around the region and around the country. And they, as Mr. Dodge said, have kept the name intact, but just updated the language.
So it's all consistent. Thank you. Ms. Blanks.
Thank you through you, Madam Mayor, and through, and to you, Mrs. Turco. I understand everything that was said. I think I'm just still struggling between the senior citizen term and the older adult. So once that transition occurs, the older adult is considered what age to what age. And the reason why I say that is because we have our young people. We call them young adults. Then when we get to a certain middle age, then we're middle-aged adults. And it seems like when the middle-aged adults creep up into your senior citizen, some of us don't want to be titled the senior citizen. So then we look for another term, and older adult kind of fits, right? So I'm just trying to figure out, is there an age bracket, if you will, that is now considered the older adult? Just help me understand it a bit. Thank you.
You can. That's a great question. You can see why it took us several years to talk this through with the commission members. One of the things that they had explored was putting in an age. And because the definition of senior citizen or older American or older adult is different, whether you're talking about federal programs, state programs, local programs, even within our town, you can go to a coffee shop and get a discount if you're a certain age. But if you go to the, another store, it's a different age. So it's kind of all over the place. And so even the membership in our senior centers, which are called senior centers, is 55 and older. That attracts lots of people. But some of the federal and state grants that we get are age-restricted at 62 or 65. So we decided, we recommend not putting in an age, which is what you see here. This doesn't include an age. It didn't before. And older adults was the term that they felt most comfortable with.
Thank you, Ms. Blanks. That was a great question from the Queen of Questions. Yes. All right. Any other? You don't have your hand up? Okay. All right. Seeing no more questions, Mr. Oh, sorry. But while he is going, Mr. Clark.
Madam Mayor, we've received no written comments on this ordinance.
Okay. Okay. No one signed up to speak. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this ordinance change? Okay. Seeing none, we will now close the public hearing, and we will begin the council meeting at 7:30. Okay. Let me make sure I'm in my right. Hmm? Okay. All right. I'm calling the November 12th Town Council meeting to order, 7:30 PM. It's actually 7:31 or 7:32. We will begin with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Mr. Davidoff.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Counselor Blanks.
Present.
Mayor Cantor.
Here.
Counselor Cortez.
Here.
Counselor Fay.
Present.
Counselor McGuinness.
Present.
Counselor Pollan.
Here.
Counselor Walters.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Winogre.
Present.
Counselor Zedanowitz.
Here.
Okay. We are now in the public comment section of our meeting. And the public comment section is restricted to items on the agenda and to residents of, or taxpayers of the town. Please state your name and address for the record before addressing the council. Please limit comments to three minutes unless speaking on behalf of a bona fide group representing that group's authorized position. In that case, you can speak up to five minutes. Members of the public that address the council are expected to observe the same decorum as members of the council and to be respectful and courteous. The council receives and hears comments from the public, but the body does not respond in this section of the meeting. So, we will begin with, I'm going to say the person that is up. And if you are, again, if you are not a West Hartford resident, you don't speak. We will, we just, I'm sorry? Three minutes per speaker, unless it's a group, same as usual. And so, I see a person, Liz, that says Stafford. If you are a West Hartford resident or taxpayer, you're welcome to come up. But if not, Shiri is the next person that's signed up. And again, state your name and address. And the person on deck is Jude.
Good evening. My name is Shiri Sandler. I live at 9 Cumberland Road. A number of you have knocked on my door recently. I'm speaking here tonight as a resident of the town, as the former chair of the town's Yom HaShoah Holocaust Commemoration, the grandchild of Holocaust survivors, a career Holocaust educator, and the mother of Jewish children in West Hartford. I'm speaking about the West Hartford Human Rights Commission. Mayor Cantor, you've seen me speak on Jewish history and my family in this building. You've attended the Yom HaShoah events I've led. You and possibly others in this room have heard me talk about how my grandmother, a survivor of Auschwitz, said, "You don't just fight for the Jews, you fight for everyone." I'm speaking tonight out of grave concern for how the perception of Jewish safety is being used to limit the human rights of others in West Hartford, how the appointment of Dr. Santiago to the commission would further bias an already seemingly deeply biased entity, and how Dr. Santiago's stated and the commission's stated disregard for the UN and the language of the Declaration on Human Rights will affect the commission's credibility and ability to fulfill its mandate. I am deeply concerned by the anti-diversity, anti-Arab, and anti-UN stances Dr. Santiago has shared and endorsed on social media. Furthermore, I reject the viewpoint held by a number of the current commissioners as stated at previous meetings that UN human rights language is inherently anti-Israel, and more so, that protecting the perception of Israel is the commission's main role. Fears of danger to Jews, whether valid or not, must not be used to allow dangers to others to pass unremarked and unchallenged. Yet, multiple commissioners have acted as if protection of Jews from antisemitism or anti-Zionism is their only responsibility in a time when racism and human rights abuses are not only becoming more common, but also more sanctioned throughout our country. I believe if this continues, the commission should be disbanded and reformed because it will not serve all the residents of our town in its current iteration. Jewish safety is bound up in a respect for diversity, for the rule of law, for different viewpoints, for tolerance, and deeply, deeply in the safety of others. There is no place for Dr. Santiago's reactionary views on the commission, and there is no place for the primacy of Jewish safety over others' safety in West Hartford. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jude, and after that, Amanda.
Good evening. My name is Jude Fahum. I live on 98 Lancaster Road, Unit A. I am a resident of West Hartford and a local physician in training. I'm here to oppose the agenda item E7, or 7E, I'm sorry, which relates to Dr. Santiago's appointment to the town's Human Rights Commission. As a policy and American Muslim, I worry that Dr. Santiago's appointment to the commission will hinder the goals and values of diversity, inclusion, respect, and equity that this town and this commission holds. It has been evident recently that the commission as a whole is in need of honest reflection on the values it claims to represent. And while change is difficult, I think we can all agree that it is a necessary part of being involved in public policy and community relations. I worry for this commission specifically from the standpoint of diversity and equity. In her own words, Dr. Santiago stated that diversity is not what makes society great. What makes a society great is common ground, the thick web of shared assumptions, moral instincts, and social norms that bind people together. With all honesty, when I first read that, I thought to myself, if more people shared the same assumptions and moral instincts that have been reflected in this room and in some of the comments and writings of Dr. Santiago, I worry about the safety of living in this town. I ask you, the bar of commission and the members in this room, what do you make of a neighbor who has different assumptions than you, or a colleague whose morals are rooted in justice and holding entities accountable for their oppression of others regardless of their identity? What do you do with diversity and thought belief that questions the assumptions you've spent your whole life weaving? What do you do with someone else's lived experience that shadows what you thought about a certain group or part of the world? Do you box that out and turn back on what comforts you, or do you recognize the gap and prepare for the difficult work ahead, the job that you guys all signed up for being in this room, being leaders in this room? Diversity is what makes a society strong and resilient, not because it simply exposes us to difference, but because it forces us to hold on to the values of human rights in our engagement with that difference. It tests whether we truly abide by them in our actions. And it is testing this commission. It is a reflection of the many issues and frustrations that are facing this commission currently. I urge you to rethink what diversity means to you and how you have or have not upheld it as a core principle of this council, and I strongly encourage you to reject Dr. Santiago's appointment in this vein. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda is next, and then Ari.
Thank you. My name is Amanda Schaflut. I am a professor of nursing. I live at 1616 Boulevard. I can actually see this building from my living room. I'm here tonight to speak in opposition to 7E, to oppose the appointment of Dr. Robin Santiago to the West Hartford Human Rights Commission, based entirely on my experience attending my very first Human Rights Commission meeting last week. My assumption is that you must not know what's going on in this commission, or something would have been done by now. I attended my first West Hartford Human Rights Commission meeting last week to speak in support of a resolution applying an ethical framework to town contracts, support grounded in my decades of clinical work as an oncology nurse and global health nurse, research and advocacy with vulnerable communities both locally and globally. What I witnessed at that meeting and the responses I subsequently received from the mayor when I expressed my deep concerns has left me stunned and embarrassed for our town. The commission co-chairs, by their own admission, demonstrated a fundamental lack of knowledge of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. When asked about their decision-making processes, commission members could not articulate one. They claimed to operate by consensus at one point in the meeting, yet appeared to follow a distorted version of Robert's Rules of Order that would make Robert himself turn over in his grave. These operational issues are foundational to democratic process. This is the reason that we follow transparent processes. It's critical to our involvement and engagement as community members. Most troubling, three commission members, including both co-chairs, openly mocked and belittled fellow commissioners and rolled their eyes at members of the public. The mayor and council member in attendance witnessed this behavior and did nothing to stand with those who had little power in the room. Since that meeting, I've tried to understand how appointments to town commissions are evaluated and recommended. I've dug deep in our town website. I've spent hours and hours trying to understand whether this can be a transparent process and what the rules are. I've been unsuccessful. Before any additional members are added to this commission, a thorough investigation of its processes, goals, alignments, and accountability is desperately needed. We must actively address the bullying, the lack of transparency, both within the commission and in the appointment process itself. Adding a commission member, any commission member, at this point before these basic governance steps are taken will only deepen the divisions, which you can see tonight, that this commission has already contributed to. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ari. After that is Heather.
My name is Ari Schaefer. I live here in West Hartford, 77 Mohawk Drive. Come today to speak in support of Robin Santiago's appointment to the Human Rights Commission. Robin has lived in West Hartford virtually her whole life. She's lived here for almost all of the last 66 years. For that, her mother and grandfather grew up in Hartford. Needless to say, Robin has deep connections to West Hartford and to the area. Her roots in this town go back farther than most who live here. Robin has not only lived here, but she has served here as well. She's volunteered here. She was the Sisterhood President of Beth El Temple here in West Hartford, and was on the boards of Salomon Schechter Day School and Yachad, an organization that supports children with developmental disabilities. She currently serves on the Jewish Community Relations Council, an organization focused on building bridges between the Jewish community and the broader Greater Hartford community. In her professional capacity, she was a dentist for almost 40 years, before retiring in 2018, serving countless patients in the great Hartford area. There, too, she dedicated her time to volunteering in service, having served on the Connecticut Dental Association's Continuing Education Committee for over 30 years, spending several years on the organization's Ethics Committee. On a personal note, I've worked with Robin in various community initiatives for a while now. She's dedicated, she's hardworking and personable. I consider myself lucky for having gotten to know her. Additionally, I know this is something she's wanted to do for a while. Months ago, she mentioned to me that she was interested in volunteering for the Human Rights Commission and serving her community in yet another way. The criticism we've heard and seen is basically that she supports Israel, just like the majority of Americans do. People have complained online in offensive and disgusting language about social media posts that really just support Israel in the same language that average Americans do every day. Because those who disagree with her can't argue with her points. They resort to baseless character attacks, and are insults to this process, the town council, and to West Hartford as a whole. Giving their complaints any serious consideration would encourage the worst parts of American politics, where we accept the most deranged attempts to assassinate the character of good people. Given Robin's decades of volunteering and service to the community in numerous capacities, West Hartford community is lucky to have her. I'm confident she will be an asset to the Human Rights Commission and to the town. I'm happy to see she will be serving West Hartford in yet another way. Thank you.
Next is Ari. Heather, and then Edie. Oh, no, that's Newington. I don't know if you are, if you are not a taxpayer resident, the next person would be Chris.
Good evening. My name is Heather Rubin-Fiedler. I live at 7 Leonard Road. I serve as the Vice President of Impact and Strategy at the Jewish Federation of Greater Hartford and a very proud resident of West Hartford. I'm here tonight to speak in strong support of Dr. Robin Santiago's nomination to the West Hartford Commission on Human Rights. I've known Robin for I’ve known Robin for seven years as a community partner and friend. She’s a person of extraordinary integrity, warmth, and humility, someone who listens deeply and strives to make others feel seen. For nearly 40 years as a dentist, she served her patients with compassion and fairness. She’s brought those same values to her volunteer work through the Federation, the Jewish National Fund, Bethel Temple, and so many other organizations that enrich the life of our town. Robin grew up here in West Hartford, her roots are in this community, and they run six decades deep. She and her husband Rafi have raised their family here, celebrated milestones here, and given back at every turn. She co-chairs her synagogue’s Israel Engagement Committee, studies Talmud daily, is an active member of the Jewish Community Relations Council of the Jewish Federation of Greater Hartford, and continues to model what it means to be a lifelong learner and bridge builder. It has been painful to see Robin targeted online, not because of anything hateful she has said or done, but because she has expressed love and support for Israel and for the Jewish people. In this moment, when conversations about the Middle East are so charged, it’s easy to lose sight of one another’s humanity. But disagreement over complex global issues should never be the grounds to disqualify a person of proven integrity and compassion from serving her town. Robin approaches people with curiosity, not judgment. She believes that no matter what side of the aisle we sit on, politically, religiously, or ideologically, what matters most is how we engage with one another, with respect, with compassion, and with a shared commitment to protecting the dignity of our most vulnerable neighbors. That, at the heart, is the mission of the Commission on Human Rights, to foster constructive conversation and collective action that makes West Hartford a more just and inclusive place for all. Dr. Robin Santiago lives those values every single day. I urge you to confirm her appointment. In doing so, you affirm that this community values fairness over fear, truth over distortion, and dialogue over division. Thank you.
Next, Edie, if you live in West Hartford or a taxpayer. If not, Chris is next. Okay. I don’t know. Oh, here is Chris.
My name is Chris Jusinski. I live at 468 Trupbrook Drive, and I’m here to discuss Agenda Item 7E. I’ve attended many of the WHHRC meetings over the last two years and wish to speak out against the appointment of Dr. Robin Santiago to commission for a specific reason, and in no way intend to villainize her or cast aspersions on her being. We are all entitled to a wide array of views on many different topics and can peacefully coexist with differing opinions. With that in mind, I’m only able to speak to what she has made publicly available, which includes her publicly available Facebook page. On that page, she has posted a number of concerning articles that seem at odds with the mission of the WHHRC. I want to make note of one particular article that stuck out to me, posted by Dr. Santiago on October 25th, just a couple of weeks ago. The article is titled “Diversity is Overrated.” Having read the article several times, I’m still horrified by the thesis, which is that a state’s happiness is a direct function of its religious and ethnic homogeneity. Homogeneity. I don’t think I need to explain how dire the consequences are for when governments act on this type of thinking. While posting an article does not mean a wholehearted endorsement of all of its text, and we are all entitled to our own opinions, the sentiment that diversity itself is somehow bad for a community is clearly in direct conflict with the mission of the human rights work. While I don’t believe I’m alone, I don’t believe that I’m alone in feeling that this sentiment is deeply offensive to many people in our very diverse town. I would hope that everyone in attendance today could understand why posting such an article publicly could be seen as an offensive statement to a broad cross-section of our town. Knowing that there have been two or three vacancies on the West Hartford Human Rights Commission for over a year now, that there is already a record of bullying and a lack of welcome and behavior from the leadership of the West Hartford Human Rights Commission, I worry that this appointment might exacerbate the issue and continue to sow conflict and division in our great community. So again, with this in mind, I urge you to not appoint Dr. Robin Santiago to reassess the process with which these appointments are made, and find a candidate that appropriately projects the values of the town and the Human Rights Commission’s charge. Thank you.
Okay. Next is Robin K., and then after that Debbie S.
Hi, my name is Robin Kipnis. No relation to Robin Santiago, but I am a resident of West Hartford. I live on Birch Road. I am here to support the appointment of Robin Santiago to the West Hartford Human Rights Commission. I’m not going to stand here and repeat what the others have said about Robin’s excellent values, but I do want to say that she is one of my new friends. I have worked with her on multiple projects and found her to be an energetic, thoughtful, sympathetic, and hard-working friend and colleague. She would be an asset to any West Hartford commission. The only other point I’d really like to make is that the objections raised in this petition, which are based on Robin’s social media posts, have taken these posts out of context to prove their objection. For example, and one of the speakers mentioned this, the petition references a social media post that she made claiming that she is anti-diversity. The author of the article, cited by Robin and used by those opposed to Robin’s nomination, is really saying that the word “diversity” divides. What we should be focusing on is the common ground between us. A reading of the complete post stands as reason for their objection to her appointment, but if you read the post, what it says is really something I think that we can all embrace. So in sum, I just want to heartily endorse Robin Santiago. She will be an asset to the West Hartford Human Rights Commission.
Next is Debbie S., and after that on deck is Carrie R.
Hi, I’m just here also to speak on behalf of Dr. Santiago. I think she would be an excellent addition to the...
Name and address.
Oh, sorry. Deborah Schaflack, 22 Buckingham Lane.
Thank you.
I’ve worked in the same organization that she has over the last two years, and I think that her intentions are good, and I think that she would be an asset to the commission. I think that some of the issues that have been raised tonight are somewhat heated, and I don’t think it needs to be elevated to that level. I think that her work in the community over a number of years speaks for itself. She has been a successful dentist, has employed multiple people of diverse backgrounds. I think her heart is in the right place, and I just want to echo some of the positive things that others have said here tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Next is Carrie R., and then Caesar.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Carrie Roush. I’m at 8 Montclair Drive. I’m a 30-year resident of West Hartford. I’ve raised my three children here and enjoyed living in this great town. I also am a nurse practitioner. I’ve worked in the Hartford region for about 30 years with older adults. So tonight, I’m here to speak in support of Robin Santiago for appointment on the Human Rights Commission. I’ve had the privilege of knowing and working closely with Robin over the past two years, and she’s been an important part of the West Hartford community her entire life. Professionally, Robin has served as a dentist, and personally, she’s a volunteer extraordinaire who has given back to this community in countless ways. She and I have worked together on a local TV program, WHCI, about antisemitism throughout history. Her compassion, knowledge, and commitment always shine through. Her love for the Jewish people and for the West Hartford community is evident in everything she does. She also brings a global perspective. She travels widely, speaks several languages, and has an incredible ability to connect with people from all backgrounds. Robin will bring warmth, insight, and dedication to this role. I can’t think of a better person to serve on the Human Rights Commission, and I strongly support her appointment. Thank you.
Caesar is next, and then Alena.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I was asked by Dr. Caesar to read a statement of his into the record. He’s a resident of West Hartford. And the message was an email sent to the mayor last week after the Human Rights Commission meeting, just describing what happened at the meeting. Dear Mayor Cantor, I’m a Connecticut resident...
Excuse me, we need your name as well.
Oh, my name is Amon, E-A-M-O-N.
And an address?
90 Girard Avenue.
Thank you. Is that in West Hartford? That’s not... Caesar is a West Hartford resident?
Correct, yeah.
Is that a corporation counsel?
It is my understanding there’s also First Amendment that does apply here to some degree in terms of anyone being able to speak at any public forum. Is that...
I’m just, I’m referring to our corporation counsel, because honestly, I’m not a lawyer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do not have a process in place for reading comments provided by residents under the standing rules.
I’m sorry, I didn’t understand that.
The actual speaker needs to be a resident of West Hartford. There’s not provision for reading written comments that were provided by a resident. I’m sorry, I’ve got something caught in my throat.
Sure. Well, I think there’s some, if you’ve already spoken, there’s...
Yeah, I’m sure somebody... Thank you.
And yeah, for the record, that’s Dr. Cesar Abadia Barero, Associate Professor of Anthropology and Human Rights at UConn.
Hi, my name is Phoebe Law. I’m currently a resident at 39 Robin Road. Dear Mayor Cantor, I’m a Connecticut resident, and I was invited yesterday to give testimony in support of the revised resolution to affirm our town’s commitment to human rights. I am a human rights and anthropology professor at the University of Connecticut and was unaware that our town had a human rights commission. I came to the meeting elated to meet people doing human rights work, and importantly, advancing an agenda that promises to protect the rights of all through making sure that businesses and governments follow human rights principles. Since you were present at the meeting, I won’t share a description of what happened. Rather, let me share with you my biggest concerns as a human rights professor and researcher. First, it seems the commission does not have any bylaws. The co-chairs and members of the committee were even unaware of basic Robert’s Rules. And when asked about procedures or processes for voting, consensus-building, they were dismissive and, at one point, seemed to be making up rules on the spot. Second, being a public hearing, it was very significant how the committee members disregarded the voices of the community members present at the meeting. Appallingly, the co-chairs thanked the participation of the public and mentioned that they were considering all our opinions. However, they were reading comments written before the meeting, so clearly, regardless of what the members of the community had to say in the meeting, they had made up their minds beforehand. Such a public display of exerting power in a public domain comes across as disrespectful, to say the least, and symbolically violent, given that the co-chairs of the Human Rights Commission were signaling the validation of some voices of the communities in contrast to the disregard of some others, including immigrants, queer, disabled, parents, health professionals, and Jews among the minoritized groups I remember. Human rights frameworks members of the committee should know were set up to precisely protect members of the community from facing direct acts of discrimination, which the co-chairs were exerting. Third, perhaps most troublesome of all, is that the members of the committee seem to lack any knowledge about the human rights framework, starting with the UNDR Convention of Human Rights or the Advances Made in Social, Economic, and Cultural Rights, which include the field of business and human rights, which makes sure, among other things, that businesses and governments are held to human rights standards. This field...
Please wind up.
Has evolved to indicate that beyond complying with labor rights, accountability in human rights means making sure that their supply chains are not involved in heinous human rights violations, including, for example, child labor or the exploitation of labor to slave-like conditions in many countries in the Global South...
Thank you.
...where I come from.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next is Alena, and then after that Adam, and then we’ll open it up.
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to talk. My name is Alena Tenetsky. I’m a resident of West Hartford on Sequin Road, and I’m here to speak in support of Dr. Robin Santiago to be on the Human Rights Commission. I will not repeat all the positive things that were already said about Robin. We have recently, relatively recently, over the two years, have become close friends. She tirelessly gives her time to the community, and most relevant here is that she initiated and participated in several outreach events to build bridges between different communities. She also lives part-time in Puerto Rico and has given endless amount of time to unite the community and be a part of the community there, and to be supportive in many different ways in both West Hartford and her home in Puerto Rico. In response to some of the accusations, I think there is a gross misqualification of how, of what it’s painting Dr. Santiago is if she is against human rights. Nothing further could be from the truth. Perhaps the interpretation of the Human Rights Declaration and specific statements in that declaration are frankly offensive and quite threatening to some of the members of my community. That does not mean that our community, or particularly Dr. Santiago, is opposed to the human rights, and again, nothing could be further from the truth. Antisemitism specifically is all this form of racism, and in the last two years, the crimes against Jewish community have increased four hundredfold, and in fact, it is the largest minority that has been targeted by hate crimes, higher than has been against the Black community, including in our own town. So it seems to be fitting to have a human rights committee, to have a member who can represent and speak to the needs of the community, not above but including, not above all else, all other rights, but including the rights of the Jewish community. Diversity of thought and belief are critical, and that I know personally is critical to Dr. Robin Santiago. And take it from somebody who grew up in a totalitarian regime, I know firsthand that not having diversity of thought leads to, what that leads to. So I would be proud to have somebody like Dr. Santiago represent the Human Rights Commission, and I would be assured that my safety in this town is upheld the same.
Please wind up. Thank you. All right. Adam is the last person that signed up.
My name is Adam Boulmasch, and I’m a Jewish taxpayer of West Hartford. I’m here to speak on Agenda Item 7E. I urge the town council to reject the appointment of Dr. Robin Santiago to the West Hartford Human Rights Commission.
Address for the record, thank you.
Excuse me?
The address for the record.
Oh, sorry, 7 Talkup Forest Road. Dr. Santiago has shared, has publicly shared posts that undermine the importance of diversity and inclusion and discredit the United Nations and deny verified human rights violations. These views are incompatible with a commission grounded in the universal...
Excuse me? Sir, do you live in Farmington?
It’s on the, it’s like on the border. I get mail from both ends.
But you are not a West Hartford resident or taxpayer?
I’m a taxpayer, if that’s what you mean, yes.
In West Hartford?
I believe so, yes. I get, I get mail from both towns, because that’s how close to the border I live.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. Dr. Santiago has publicly shared posts that undermine the importance of diversity and inclusion and discredit the United Nations and deny verified human rights violations. These views are incompatible with a commission grounded in the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. They are also incompatible with the values of inclusivity that our town believes to be important. It is a farce to even consider someone who, by her and her own supporters’ admission, supports a nation that is currently in the process of committing an internationally-recognized genocide for a commission on human rights. The fact is that there’s nothing Jewish about this genocide or in those who are committing it, and the implication that there is... this genocide or in those who are committing it, and the implication that there is, as Ms. Santiago, by her own words imposed, clearly thinks, is in fact anti-Semitic. This is a disqualifying quality in a Human Rights Commissioner. Again, I urge you to reject the appointment of Robyn Santiago and to appoint someone who can determine without bias how best to advance a human rights agenda in West Hartford. Thank you."
Is there, that's the end of the people that had signed up to speak? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to something on the agenda that has not signed up? Come on up and state your name and your address.
Hello, everyone. My name is Michelle Janowitz. I live on 125 Robin Road. Lived in this town since 2013, and I'm just going to continue. Sorry, I'm horrible at speaking and bad with microphones, but I'm going to finish the email or as much as I can get through. "There are perhaps more troublesome of all of that, of all, is that the members of the committee seem to lack any knowledge about the human rights framework, starting with the UNDR Convention of Human Rights for the Advances Made in Social, Economic, and Cultural Rights, which include the field of business and human rights, which makes sure, among other things, that businesses and governments are held to human rights standards. This field has evolved to indicate that beyond complying with labor rights, accountability in human rights means making sure that their supply chains are not involved in heinous human rights violations, including, for example, child labor or the exploitation of labor to slave-like conditions in many countries in the Global South where I come from. What started as a troublesome sentiment grew to a complete sense of disbelief and deep worry that the members of the committee were attacking the United Nations and the most important human rights documents that have been created to protect humanity from violence and injustice. I kept on asking myself, how come members of a Human Rights Commission, oh, sorry, yeah, how come members of a Human Rights Commission attack the international body created to uphold human rights and its set of principles? Not only the display of power and attacks on a member of the committee, but the deep disregard and mockery of the comments of members of the community seem to indicate that the commission is blocking human rights agendas, indicating that they value and uphold the rights of some while disregarding and dismissing the rights of others. It is clear that a lot of work needs to happen in this committee. Procedurally, the members should be trained in their role and establish clear procedures and bylaws which demands active listening and consensus building across differences in our community. That's important. The problem is not dissent, but how dissent is handled. Ethically, the members of a commission in human rights should, at the very best, be familiar with human rights frameworks and ideally believe in human rights principles and comply with human rights standards in their handling of meetings and conversations. Members who do not know about human rights frameworks and attack human rights institutions should not be members of a human rights, I'm sorry, commission. I'm deeply concerned that what I saw was the antithesis of human rights work, and I hope that under your leadership such important commission grows to represent the democratic values promised for the advancement of the rights of all. In times when the security of our communities are under attack, it is these kinds of commissions who can make a difference in how communities feel safe and empowered and build trust in the government and one another. That's it. Thank you for letting me speak."
Okay, is there anybody else that has not spoken? Come on up, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Hannah Belski. I live at 23 Jessamine Street. Anyone involved in mainstream Jewish community has heard of Dr. Santiago, who is extremely active in our community. I know that she is a supporter of Solomon Schechter School, where my daughters previously attended. This is not an attack on Robyn's concerns on anti-Semitism, an issue I too care deeply about as a Jew raising Jewish kids here in West Hartford. After hearing what sounded like an evening so deeply counter to the type of discourse and dialogue I'd like to see in my beloved town, I went to look up more on Dr. Santiago's background out of deep concern for who we elect to this commission that's so critical. What I found was Robyn's public Facebook content, as many have referenced. Israel and Jewish human rights and safety are clearly Dr. Santiago's passion. What concerned me, though, was her reposting of misinformation, stereotype, and anti-Muslim rhetoric, whether intentionally or inadvertently. I would hope inadvertently. For example, one posted article reiterated the false and dangerous narrative that all Gaza is Hamas. In another repost, she highlights, quote, "Islamic migrants causing havoc in Switzerland sorts from Israel Live News." My concern is whether we, as a town, are appointing people who are joining this commission out of reactive or defensive position, who may prioritize one community or subset of Jewish community in a way that may impede the commission's ability to serve all those whose human rights are under attack, especially now in our community. I'm concerned about anti-Semitism, but an ineffective and biased commission may in all likelihood increase anti-Semitism for myself and my kids. Combating anti-Semitism requires solidarity, engagement across lines of difference, repair, and tough conversation, and I hope Dr. Santiago will be a part of that that I'd like to see. We need a commission, though, that represents the full diversity of our town and has the interests in and capacity to support all of our neighbors. Thanks."
Okay, is there anybody else that did not speak that would like to speak? Okay, I don't see any hands. Up, come on up.
Hi, Ally Blumquist. I live at 190 Penn Drive, and I'm reading this on behalf of another colleague. Good.
Person, a West Hartford resident? I don't know the, I'm going to refer to, okay, fine, thank you.
Great. Good evening, and thank you to the Town Council for listening to community concerns. My name is Liz, and I was in attendance for public comment at last week's Human Rights Commission meeting. After what I witnessed last week, I am compelled to speak again now in respect to Agenda Item 7E. I'm a neighbor of West Hartford community and a regular patron of local commerce. I have a degree in international studies, as well as backgrounds in conservation science, various subsets of critical theory, and nonprofit leadership. As I understand it, West Hartford holds an annual ceremony to honor the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. If this celebration is done in earnest as a commitment to the UDHR rather than as platitudes, there are pressing matters for the council to address regarding the Human Rights Commission. As a first step, I urge the council to reject the appointment of Dr. Robyn Santiago, whose public conversations are strongly at odds with the human rights values that the commission was created to protect and uphold. Dr. Santiago aligns with organizations that have outwardly described the UN as anti-Semitic while also sharing social media posts that promote exclusionary ideologies and a disregard for human rights. Appointing her would only enforce the lack of integrity and good faith practices within the leadership of this commission. Additionally, it has come to my attention that a multitude of women of color have applied for this position and were not selected. If there is to be an accurate representation of the diverse West Hartford community, this is not how that is achieved. Combining this discrimination with what was on display last week, false statements made to rush reject a resolution still under revision by subcommittee, the blatant bullying of other commissioners, the lack of a cohesive process, then I believe is now is the responsibility of the Town Council to not only reject this appointment, but to also investigate the efficacy of this commission in its current iteration and whether it's truly serving the mission of human rights for all in the town of West Hartford. You can see from the petition with 129 signatures that was sent to the mayor and the council that I am far from the only person that has these sentiments. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else? Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Seer. I'm a resident at 28 Manchester Circle, speaking tonight on Agenda Item 7E. I strongly urge the Town Council to reject the appointment of Robyn Santiago to the Human Rights Commission. Her public alignment with anti-diversity rhetoric and exclusionary ideologies will undermine the credibility and mission of a body meant to protect and promote human rights for all. Beyond this appointment, the commission itself faces serious challenges. Its leadership has propagated false claims and misleading narratives that stifle transparency and collaboration. The commission does not reflect the racial, religious, or lived diversity of our community, and it has become imbalanced to the point that it fails to represent the best interest of all residents. If the Human Rights Commission cannot be meaningfully reformed demographically and operationally, it should be paused or even dissolved. Approving this appointment without addressing these systemic issues would only deepen the harm and erode public trust. I urge the council not only to reject the appointment of Robyn Santiago, but also to initiate a thorough investigation into the commission's leadership and structure to ensure it truly serves the community's diverse needs and upholds its mission with integrity. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, seeing no more feedback. Thank you all for coming and speaking on behalf of this item. I appreciate, and it is important to hear from you. Okay, where's my agenda? Okay, all right. Is there, Mr. Davidoff, we did get a number of emails as well. Yes, did you? They come directly to-
Madam Mayor, all those emails were sent to the Town Council.
Thank you. All right, so just so you know, they, all right. Okay, so now, we are going to take a fi, we are going to take about a seven-minute break and come back.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Without objection, I move that items five A, seven C, seven D, seven F, and seven G be placed on the consent calendar.
Is there any objection? Okay, there being no objection, the items are placed on consent. Mr. Winograd.
I move adoption of the consent calendar.
Second. Motion's been made in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and we go to six. Mr. Winograd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to adopt an ordinance concerning the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission.
Second. Motion's been made in seconded. Mr. Ledwith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Of course, this ordinance was the subject of a public hearing earlier this evening, and has also been the subject of a past Human and Community Services Committee meeting in calls for the changing of term limits for commissioners within the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission to be more consistent with other boards and commissions, and also the changing the term elderly or retired within the ordinance to older adults. A quick thank you to Helen Rabino Turco for her presentation this evening, as well as her work with the commission on making these changes. And I will pause there and turn it back to you, Madam Mayor, for any discussion that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Ledwith. Ms. Pollan, I know you're on the phone, but if you could maybe just start, as this was your committee.
Sure thing. Thank you, Madam Mayor. As Town Manager Ledwith indicated, this has been a topic of discussion for the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission for actually a couple of years. And the members have worked hard with Helen Rabino Turco, as well as with our Corporation Council's office, to craft some edits to the commission, and so that's what is before us this evening. As Town Manager Ledwith indicated, it does change the term limits and also some of the outdated language that is contained within the description of the commission, but it leaves intact the name of the commission, which will, to my understanding, assist us with applying for certain grants that are targeted towards towns with Senior Citizen Advisory Commission. And I would urge support.
Thank you, Ms. Pollan. Are there any other comments, questions, for anyone? Okay, again, this was the subject of the public hearing right before this meeting, and this has been, was really, came from the Senior Citizen Advisory Commission, the older adults in the Senior Citizen Advisory Commission, to make that change. So, all right, we have to do a roll call. Mr. Devera.
Counselor Blanks.
Yes.
Mayor Cantor.
Yes.
Counselor Cortez.
Yes.
Counselor Fay.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
Counselor Pollan.
Yes.
Counselor Walters.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Winograd.
Yes.
Counselors Zadanowitz.
Yes.
Unanimous nine zero.
Okay. Number seven, Mr. Winograd. Letter, yeah, number seven.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Seven A, propose, move to set for public hearing on December seventeenth, 2025, at 6:30 PM. A resolution directing the town managers to submit an automated traffic enforcement safety device plan to the Connecticut Department of Transportation for approval.
Second. Motion's been made in seconded. Mr. Ledwith, we just want to review. We've been talking about this for a very long time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, we, as the council knows, received a Safe Streets For All grant, going back now two years, I think, almost, from the federal government. This grant would allow us to implement a speed enforcement camera program townwide, and we have spent the better part of the last year working with a consultant and then working with our community as well through several public outreach meetings, explaining the program to our community, and then ultimately landing on a plan that we would ask the council's support of on December seventeenth, following the public hearing, which outlines the fifteen locations that we would be placing these cameras around town. And should the council approve this plan on December seventeenth, we would then submit the approved plan to the Connecticut Department of Transportation and the Federal Highway Administration for their approval. And we would expect that approval sometime in twenty twenty, early 2026. And from there, we would go out to bid to hire a vendor to implement the speed enforcement camera program. And we would expect that to be up and running in late spring of 26.
Thank you, Mr. Ledwith. So, are there beside, is there, they'll be set, so we'll speak to it then. So, all of those in favor? I don't think there's any more comments or questions on that, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry, any opposed? Motion carries, letter B.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to adopt a resolution concerning state filing for a school construction grant for Brayburn Elementary School.
Second. Motion's been made in seconded. Mr. Ledwith.
Thank you. This resolution authorizes the Board of Education to apply to the state of Connecticut for a school construction grant to replace the roof at Brayburn Elementary School. This is a routine requirement of the state, which asks that the local legislative body formally authorize the Board of Education to file for a grant. The grant, if awarded, will allow the town to offset the cost of the renovation of the roof.
Thank you, Mr. Ledwith. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Walters, this was your committee here?
Sorry.
No, I know.
Through you, Madam Mayor. This did not make it through committee.
Sorry, okay, Paul, thank you.
Or sorry, Madam Mayor. This was a late grant application that the Board of Education is looking to submit on an emergency basis, so we did not bring it through committee.
Thank you.
But, as I said, it is a fairly routine request that the council frequently votes on to submit the grants.
Thank you.
But, Madam Mayor, I am generally in favor, yes.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, letter E. Mr. Winograd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve the appointment of Robin Santiago as a member of the Human Rights Commission for a term to expire December thirty first, 2026.
Sorry, second.
Okay, so, obviously, we had a lot of feedback on this appointment, and we actually had it on consent. I just want to explain, first, I want to thank everybody for coming to speak. And I want to say that there's nothing, as a mayor, there's nothing more painful than seeing your community divided and in pain. And the last thing we wanted our Human Rights Commission to do is to be divisive. But, a human, we are state mandated to have minority party representation under state law, which, in these highly political times, often will, will, does happen to have, create division. And so, the minority party, the Republicans, this was an appointment, this was an open seat for a number of months, maybe almost a year, and they have been working to recruit somebody for this board. And it is hard for us to get people to fill our boards and commissions. Our town clerk's office works tirelessly to try to look, if somebody's saying that there's a lot of people that want to serve on this commission, and people, I heard somebody say, women of color, we have not seen those resumes come through. So, if you have an interest and you want to serve, please fill out the form and submit it through our town clerk's office. And so, oftentimes, there will be, there will not be a quorum, or there won't be a full attending board. It's hard, everybody is busy, and these are volunteers, and they're all trying to serve their community. And you might not agree with them, and they might, they oftentimes will not have the professional level of expertise as somebody coming in that might be looking at a board. But, there are people, oftentimes, although you might intensely disagree, I think the ultimate goal is to better our community. And so, my concern with, you know, we had it, we were going to move forward with this appointment, and my concern, the reason that I felt that, was not necessarily that I would have chosen a person that the minority party would have chosen, it's that, it's their, it's their chance to put a person in minority representation that reflects the views of the minority party. That is state statute. And so, I happen to know Robin. I've known her for forty years. I don't agree with her on a number of things. I respect her. I think she's done a tremendous amount for our community. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have the voice she has necessarily on all the social media posts that she's had, because I think they can mislead people. But, I, I, she's a professional person, and she's not disqualified as a person to serve on, because her views are different on this commission. So, that is my own take on this. So, I do, I was, the first time I went to the commission in a while, actually, Mr. Walters served on the Human Rights Commission a number of years ago. It has done some wonderful things. They have struggled at times when there's been a group of people that have differing views, and that's what our community is all about. I do agree that it's not as diverse a commission as I would like to see. And we are going to work on that. We're also going to work on training and having the prepared for meetings and support the group in the ways we can to have it be more productive and to be respectful, just as, I don't agree with my colleagues, and we run this town respectfully, and that's what we do. So, we have work to do on the commission, but I, as a minority, as a minority recommendation, I don't feel that I have the grounds to deny it, so. And anybody else want to speak? Mr. Winograd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be brief. Yeah, like you, I, if this were our party's appointment, I doubt that we would be moving forward, Dr. Santiago. I actually don't know her, though my, she was my wife's dentist for a while, so I recognize the name. Again, it would not be my choice, in part because of some of the posts, but more because I think she aligns with a different party, which is, again, perfectly okay in town. But, that's why we have guaranteed minority representation. And so, really, out of respect for colleagues on council, if, when they bring forward somebody, I do think it's our responsibility to sort of honor those wishes, short of some extraordinary information. And I certainly haven't heard that tonight or through the post. Again, lots of things on the post I did not disagree with, I did not agree with, but, again, that doesn't mean that she's disqualified. So, I will be voting yes.
Ms. Blanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I won't repeat everything that was said by the mayor and the deputy mayor, but what I will say is this. I do encourage Dr. Santiago to be open and advocate for all human rights, despite her personal views, because I, too, was very disturbed when I saw her personal posts and also listening to everybody here today. And I would applaud everyone who came forward in terms of those who were in support of Dr. Santiago, Santiago, but also to those who were opposed. So, thank you for coming out. I yield back.
Thank you, Ms. Blanks. Anybody else? Mr. Walters.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Mayor. I, first off, I'm very thankful and grateful that everybody came out, both pro and against this appointment. And I do want to put on the record that I'm deeply disappointed in what appears to be happening with the Human Rights Commission, as it doesn't sound like the one that I served on whatsoever. And I would greatly encourage those participants to, to, to listen to other folks, including, including our clerk, whom I'm sure will be speaking with them. I completely disagree with much of what Dr. Santiago has posted. I have been struggling with this because, on the one hand, I vehemently disagree with her, but I have to respect her right to have an opinion. With that said, I would encourage Dr. Santiago to, as Counselor Blanks mentioned, to be open and listen. And also, I'm taking a leap of faith that she will honor the human rights of all people, including those in Gaza. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Mr. Zadanowitz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the minority leader, this was a, a post that we brought forward for this, and it hasn't, hasn't been easy through the years trying to get them, because a lot of people don't want to be on these commissions. But, one thing that stands out clear is that human rights means all people. It doesn't mean one point of view. It means all views. And just like our community, a community with only one set of values and one set of views, and without dissent, is, I think, would be quite boring. We, at this table, don't agree all the time. We, and the minorities, probably don't agree all the time with each other. But, we make it work, we keep it professional. And those different views is what I think makes this community stronger. Because if you had everyone the same, in the same room, doing the same thing all the time, it, there wouldn't be any benefit there to the community, because you would be not representing everyone. So, disagree as you will. I think that makes a stronger community, a more vibrant community. We've done it up here, we've done it professionally on many topics. So, I just would like to move this forward. I was disappointed that it had to come to this. I'm not familiar with what happened in the meeting. I can't watch it on closed-circuit TV, because it's, it wasn't recorded. I'd love to have seen that meeting, but I will be supporting this going forward. Thank you.
Mr. Cortez.
Through you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank everyone that's here today for, for having the courage to come here, having the courage to step up to the podium and speak for three minutes. It's not easy, you know, in having discussions. You know, I've heard discussions on both sides. And, you know, and I want to thank, and I thank everybody in all commissions for having the courage to serve on these commissions. Most of the time, you know, they fly under the radar, and it's not controversial. So, I thank Dr. Robert Santiago for having the courage to serve. And, you know, first person that I've seen, you know, encountered this. But, you know, it's difference of opinion, you know, difference of how we view things, you know, and that's what would make a good, you know, human rights committee, is having a difference. If everybody looked at things the same way, you know, how do we grow? How do we make each other better? You know, quite, you know, very often, we disagree on this table, all of us here. And, but, it has made me better over four years. You know, if you look at how I was on day one and who I am now, I'm a different person, and that's because of the differences we have here and growth. So, you know, I look forward to seeing, seeing what Dr. Robert Santiago brings to the table.
Fay.
Thank you very much. Wow, I, wow, I wasn't expecting this at all. I do not, just for the record, I don't know Dr. Santiago. I've never met her, never seen her, never spoken with her. I don't know what her views are, as I don't know what many of the people who serve on our commissions are. And I do work hard at this job. I work extremely hard at this to try to keep up with everything that's going on. I serve the community at large, and that means everybody, regardless of your color, your sex, your gender, your sexual identity, your religion. I, myself, am a member of several minority groups. And I know what it feels like to be discriminated against and to be disparaged and to have your personal character assassinated. And part of that goes with doing this job that I'm doing, to serve my community. So, I think diversity is extremely important, and that does mean diversity of thought, whether we like it or not. Our First Amendment rights, freedom of speech, are a constitutional right, and they're protected. And everybody is entitled to their own opinion and their own speech. I am grappling with a solution to some of the things you've brought forward about the commission. It very much concerns me. I want this commission, because it is so important, to function and for everybody's thoughts and points of view to be able to be expressed. Human rights are human rights, and that means for every human being. It should be colorblind. It should be blind to every physical characteristic. It should be about humans and what we can achieve and our potential. That's why we have this commission. So, whether we agree- So whether we agree with Dr. Santiago or not, I'm hoping that she will add an element that will address concerns of this community and help us ensure that everybody's human rights are protected and honored. That's my expectation for this group, and I think that's the rest of our town's expectations for this group, and I will do everything to help make sure that that happens. So along these lines, I will be supporting Dr. Santiago's nomination for this commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fay. Any other comments? Ms. McGinnis.
Through you, Madam, excuse me, through you, Madam Mayor. Like others have said, I don't agree with all the posts that Dr. Santiago posted on her social media, but she does have the right to those opinions. And I also do have serious concerns about what seems to be going on on the Human Rights Commission. I know that we will be looking into, into that, but I, again, human rights is about all rights, and I do plan, I will be supporting her nomination. Thank you.
Thank you, and I just want to add that Ben is, Ben Winogre's a lawyer, and he has volunteered to help the commission, guide them, help with the Robert's Rules, FOI, a structure, and, and respect, and I think that will help. And we will, you know, if, if it is so dysfunctional that we do need to take a break, we will, but right now, we're going to try to have a functioning Human Rights Commission, and again, it might not function as well as, as many of you envision, but in a volunteer board without, without expertise in the area, we do the best we can. So all those in, yeah, Deb, sorry, yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Oh, wait, I can't tell. Am I on?
Yes, you're, yes.
Okay, thank you. Through you, Madam Mayor. I will also be voting in favor of Dr. Robin Santiago. Again, she is the Republican recommendation for the Human Rights Commission. I've known Robin a long time as well. People are multi-layered, you know, we don't agree with everything that even our friends and our allies agree with, and I think that Robin's experience, her life experience and her, her, her community experience will benefit the Human Rights Commission and benefit our town, and I'll be voting yes.
Okay, Deb, thank you. All right, okay, so all of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any, any opposed? Motion carries. We will go to eight reports from the town manager. Thank you, Mr. Ledwith.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I believe Corporation Council has an executive session planned for this evening, so I'll keep my comments brief. The report can be found online, and I just want to quickly, we do have a time change for a Human and Community Services Committee meeting that's scheduled for Monday, November 17th. That will take place at 5:00 p.m., and it will be a virtual meeting, and then, of course, we have our town council meeting planned for next Tuesday, November 18th, at 8:00 p.m. here in council chambers. And just one other quick announcement I want to make, a big shout-out to our finance team. The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the town of West Hartford for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024. The report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit full of disclosure, to clearly communicate its financial story, and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. So a very special thank you in recognition go to Lisa Newton, Patty Lewis, Angela Iaduciani, Carrie Hupfer, Erica Sledge, and Jackie McLaughlin, and the entire financial services staff who made this award possible. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and that concludes my report this evening. Happy to answer any questions that you or the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Ledwith. Any questions for the town manager? Okay, seeing none, Corporation Council, Mr. Dodge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have no formal report this evening. As the town manager indicated, we will require an executive session to discuss strategy and negotiations with respect to pending litigation. For those in the audience and who are watching at home, I do not anticipate that we will be taking any action after that executive session. This is purely a strategy session. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dodge. Any questions for Corporation Council? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to try to fly through these, kind of a surprising award, America's Number One College Booming Town, West Hartford. So MoveBuda, a technology company that makes, with tools to make it easier for people to move and relocate, was on a quest to find 2025's most popular college town. Where, where are the towns where students can turn campus traditions into lifelong ties? And the answer was West Hartford, Connecticut. So America's number one, that was a, that was a surprising one. Bright, they said, West Hartford's a bright spot off a beaten path with sky-high rate of newcomers seeking to move in versus those looking to leave, and once they settle, most residents can find, they walk shops, tree-lined streets, and offer everything from wine bars to bakeries. Ardash, Tolat, and Jeremy, J.J. Safran, are, rise to Eagle Scout Troop 44, which meets at the Universalist Church. They are rebuilding an ornamental paverstone walkway at Westmore Park. That is Ardash, A-darsh, is project, and Jeremy's is repairing and repainting a historical cabin on Westmore Park property. Congratulations and thank you to them and their parents and the troop that supports them. Eversource is offering heat assistance programs. Please go to Eversource.com and BillHelp or 211.org for, for any assistance. The L is a, a development that our housing authority is nearing completion, and they are doing a random draw lottery. The deadline is, you must apply between November 4th and January 5th, submitting a pre-application. They have a link on www.lnorthmaine.com. Thirty-one, the 31st Morley Red Wagon Drive will take place tomorrow. I don't think it's going to rain, right? I don't think so. Yeah, it'll be cold. We may run. 9:30 a.m., and it is my, one of my favorite days of the year. Run Foley Foundation World Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Day will take place on November 20th, 5:30 to 7:00. I'm not sure, I think it's, there's a link to, it's just an awareness day, so there's not an event, but there's a link to information. Playhouse on Park has two December productions, All Is Calm and The Christmas Tree, both great plays, and the links are there. I'm just going to make an extra talk about, so many of our community are feeling incredibly in need because of changes to, you know, there was stop and snap and increases in health insurance and so many challenges, and our community comes forward time after time after time to help our neighbors and in creative ways, and I just want to thank everybody that has donated enormous amounts of food. We had overflow food in the lobby, and Morley's going to fill up more, and we've had cash donations. We just got a notion our Nepalese community will be delivering, the Nepalese Association of America, of Connecticut, will be delivering a check on Friday, and the generosity is tremendous. Right now, what the food pantry needs most is, is cash, is being able to pick the areas of need that they have, they can, and not worry about storing and get it as needed. So if you are looking to do something for the holiday, I know MIPA Club is going to be doing a contribution, and it will be, it will be, I'm sure, appreciated, so if you have ideas like that. Mr. Cortez, I don't know if you want to say anything about the Methodist Church?
So since this is my, not our last meeting, but second to last, I just want to say that as always, you know, we're a donate, you know, a collection for the Town That Cares Food Pantry at Town. We do have bins outside, you know, for nonperishable food items. Again, it's convenient if you live on that side of town, or if you just can't make it to Town Hall during business hours, convenient spot for you to drop off things, and also they're doing a sock drive as well, that will go to the Friendship Center in New Britain to help, you know, families that are there and help the unhoused community in our neighbor, in, in our region.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cortez, for always being reminding, and socks and shoes are really important for people that are unhoused. Okay, or people that don't have enough resources to get them. All right, so with that, we go, Mr. Winogre. Executive session?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Twelve.
I find it twelve.
Twelve.
Without objection, I move that we go into executive session pursuant to Section 1-2068 of the Connecticut General Statute to discuss strategy and negotiations with respect to pending litigation to wit Instant Property Solutions LLC at Al versus town of West Hartford zoning board of appeals, docket number HHDCV246184621S.
Second. Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We ask the town manager, Corporation Council to join us, Deputy Corporation Council to join us, and I think that's it. Yes? Mr. Dodge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just for the purpose of the minutes, I would also like to invite, excuse me, invite into executive session our outside counsel for this matter, James Healy, who is a partner at the law firm Cowdery, Murphy &amp; Healy, and two of his associates, attorney Allison White and attorney, excuse me, Shivangi Batia.
Okay, so, and we always said all those in favor, so, okay, we are in executive session.[1762.97][1762.97]